I'm going to call the town council meeting of May 20th to order. If everybody would please, who's able to, please stand. Join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence for military and public safety personnel, past and present. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one inch, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. It's good to see people back in the room. We're going to go through now the review of the minutes from the past meetings. First one I have is the budget work session from May 6, 2021. I do have one change. Final bullet. Mr. Klein stated that currently it is proposed that the town will receive 1.312, and then at the bottom of that, it's 1.062. I think it should be 4.312? And then 4.062? Is that correct?
1.1.
The full amount is 4.3.
4.132.
4.312. I think he was putting a 1 instead of a 4. And then a 1, yeah, right? That's the only change I have on that.
Take a motion that we adopt the minutes from the May 6, 2021 budget work session.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Aye. Okay, opposed? Next is May 6 meeting minutes. I do have one change. Page 5 of 8, it's just a typo. Second to last bullet. Mr. Andrew DiMasia reported that if the town could not partner with Taki, it is too cost prohibitive. It should be 2 with 2 Os. I don't have any other changes.
Take a motion that we accept the meeting minutes as amended by Council President McCluskey for May 6.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay. We're actually a couple minutes early. We can't go into the public hearing yet because we've got to wait until 7:05. Why don't we move into old business and just do a reading of ordinance 062021? Is that okay? Yeah? Somebody want to read that for just the top of it for the purpose of having it?
An ordinance for the purpose of adopting a budget for the town of Centerville for fiscal year 2022.
Okay. Put that in as a second reading. We have any updates on the fireworks? Why don't we move to the fireworks and then we can get that out?
We do not have any updates. We did not meet this week because we all hadn't done our homework yet.
Oh, okay. It's good to call you out in a meeting that you didn't do your homework.
I'm calling myself out, too, so.
Okay.
Do the trash.
Yeah, why don't we do the trash and recycle bid consideration? Kip, do you want to come up? Is that something you're going to be doing?
Okay. As you know, we went out for bids. The contract ends June 30th for the current contractor that's working. Request for bids went out. We only had two contractors respond to us. You have them there. There was a substantial difference between the two. One was Chesapeake Waste Industries, who currently does our waste collection and recycling. The other was Bates. Given the amount of money difference in that the two contractors were proposing to go with Chesapeake Waste for the next three years and with an additional two one-year options after that.
All right, do they have any questions?
I've got some questions. Are there? And I think we all agree, can probably agree, that Chesapeake hasn't been the world's greatest trash service. I mean, are there sideboards here where we can claw back some costs to the town or look out? Because there's been numerous instances of late pickup, no pickup with the same firms. A little antsy about sort of re-upping with them at frankly, at a higher cost when we know what the service track record looks like.
Correct. We did have a meeting with Dean Rowe, the owner of the company. Crystal, Carolyn, Mike Whitehill, and myself. We sat down, talked to him about some of the concerns that we had. And Dean hears from me quite often, let alone his office staff hears from our staff quite often about that also. There is things in place in the contract that we can end the contract at any time. There was some liquidated damages penalties that can be, you know, applied to it and such. Some of the things that we discussed there was especially like recycling. Come to find out, their recycling efforts have changed from what they were when they started, and they didn't communicate that with the town as to what can be recycled and what can't. So when there was a lot of recycling missed, most of the time according to him, it's because the recycling was contaminated. And he went through the whole process of what happens when they get to the recycle center and they've got a contaminated load and extra cost and everything that's involved with it, which are pretty substantial fees. But we did express to them that we weren't happy with lack of communication and moving this forward to the town so we could reach out to the residents. So that's one thing that kind of worked on. I know Crystal worked on this week, and Carolyn's been involved in the emails, too, trying to get them to forward information before, so we can get it out as soon as possible to try and limit some of these problems. But yes, it was lengthy discussion about missed streets and, you know, we can understand sometimes people put their trash out late. You know, it's not up to us to say whether they're being honest, and they definitely had it out by 6 o'clock in the morning or not. There's many, many times that you can see going down the street, there's only one or two missed on the street, that that's a very good possibility. The other thing that Mr. Dean explained to us is that his trucks may not always run the route the same way. There's five trucks that collect the municipal waste, not the recycling. And if something happens and one of those drivers runs the route backwards, he says that it seems like not just here, but with other towns that they serve and everything. People get used to the truck coming at a certain time, and they figure, well, I don't have to get it out there by 6 o'clock. Well, if the truck runs the route backwards and they're in the neighborhood at 7 o'clock when they're usually in that neighborhood at 10 o'clock, they put it out late, and of course it got missed, so.
Yeah, I mean, these are, some of this is not debatable, right? They're missing entire neighborhoods.
No. When there's entire streets that are missed, that's just poor management. That was one of the things we talked to him about. We've also told him that we need maps that he's given each of his drivers with that truck's route marked out on it so that we can see exactly how it is. You know, that'll help us clear some of the stuff up, but.
One of the things, too, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, Kip, but to add to his statement where if they're running the route backwards, he said that that is definitely not what they're supposed to do. Unfortunately, he doesn't, he's not aware of it until they come back and the truck's been weighed, and it's a lot less than what it should be. And so whatever personnel, you know, related matters that they handle at that time, obviously the damage was done. And so we still have to have someone come back and pick up the trash and recycling.
Could they take a map every, every time and highlight it as they go through?
There's maps in the truck.
Take a photo of what the route they did and just send that to you as a, here's Wednesday.
Well, according to him, and I know when they started the contract that they're finishing up, that each driver had that map and would mark off the locations where there wasn't anything set out for whatever reason, or if there was a problem and trash was all over the street at this address, they used to document all that. Now, according to Mr. Rowe, they're still supposed to be doing that. But the other thing we have asked is, well, why can't you share that with us? I mean, you're getting it in your office. How much is it going to take for you to email that information to us also? As I said, it was a rather lengthy discussion with him, so.
So we did find some information, at least some avenues to take. So they are supposed to be providing us with that information this week. I did advise him to have all of that stuff to us by tomorrow.
The contamination of the recycling, that's because, generally because people are putting unrecyclable plastics or whatever into their single stream. Is that, that's right?
Right. One thing we learned at this meeting that wasn't on the list when they started this other contract is glass. Their recycling center won't accept any glass at all, any recycled glass, you know, bottles, drink bottles and that kind of stuff, beer bottles, no glass. And he said they can have an entire recycled load turned down because it's contaminated with glass, so.
How is it that they ever, ever even get a load correct? I mean, and then, I don't know how many, how many trucks it takes to fill up a truck of recycling, but I guarantee everybody has glass. I mean.
This is, this seems incumbent upon really educating the public about what can and can't go in the single stream recycling, because I would argue, if this stuff is going to the landfill anyway, looking at, you know, $50,000 in cost per year for recycling.
I agree.
Let's just cut out the middleman and take it to the dump.
I'll be very honest with you. I'm not happy that we only got two bidders to begin with. I'm not happy with the price difference between the two bidders that we have, but that's basically my sole purpose for recommending Chesapeake over Bates is because of the price difference. We'd even talked to trying to go out to bid again, but I can tell you that we're probably, it's not going to get any cheaper. If anything, if we reached out to some of the larger companies like Waste Management, one of those companies, it's going to be far above what Ches, or far above Chesapeake and Bates cost.
Do you know off the top of your head what is the budget for this year for trash removal? Do you have that number?
A little over $300,000.
Yes.
So this number's going down.
The.
It's over $300,000 this year. Their first year is $294,000.
That, if you look at it by the.
There's two pieces of it.
Yeah, there's two pieces. When she.
Because you're talking about the recycle and.
And the bottom piece of the contract, because you have to add the two costs in, right?
Right. The other thing is that on the contract we're currently working on, we have, the town has three dumpsters, two at the Public Works Yard and one at the wastewater treatment plant. Those dumpsters, he didn't list them in his contract. He said they're covered under this cost already. So that may be a portion of the change in it, but.
Does that line item also include the rush pickup, or is that a separate, is that a separate thing?
It includes downs.
Yeah, it includes the yard waste, so that's. Sorry, I didn't bring his.
I know, I'll have mine.
It's in the minutes. Hang on a second. I can tell you.
That's right, from the last meeting. I can tell you that what it winds up being, the difference between the contract they're currently working on over the past three years and the three years of this next contract going forward is $197,000.
More.
Yes, more for these next three years.
It's about 3% a year.
55, does that sound right?
Yes. For downs. Yes, for the yard waste.
But just so the public is clear, we are talking about an increase in $200,000 in expenditures for the exact same service.
Yes.
And, and you know, we had the other bidder as well in the previous contract.
Yes.
And decided not to go with them anymore. And I, I would agree with Kip in that Republic, Waste Management, any of those national companies are going to be considerably higher.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry off the top of my head, I can't give you the exact numbers, but when we put this out to bid the last time, Republic, I think, was one of the large companies that bid on it, and it was like $800,000 above what the next contractor on the list was, which would have been Bates. And they were above Chesapeake, so.
All right, I'm looking for a motion. So this contract that we're on currently ends when? June 30th, correct?
June 30th of this year.
And if they don't perform, this is a three-year contract that we're awarding. If they don't perform, we have the availability to cancel them.
To cancel their contract.
And if that's the case, right, we would need to go out and do another RFP much earlier. I mean, it just takes a long time. Like, the last time that we did this, when we originally bid this one out, I mean, it took us 18 months, I think, to get it all figured out.
Yes, it did the last time, because we were doing a lot of fact-finding at the time, whether to have town-supplied cans or, you know, contractor-supplied cans, the different options of the automated service where the truck just pulls up and an arm comes out and dumps it. We looked at so much of that kind of stuff, and that's, it did take us 18 months. To get this far with this, we've been five months now with this, between trying to get the RFP straight, getting it out, back and forth with bidders, you know, to kind of get their feelings, what could we do different, those kind of things, so.
And if you think about it, an RFP in five months, that's pretty quick, all things considered, in government contracts, even in business contracts. So I hope our citizens realize that Kip, Carolyn, Crystal did their best and got this done, and they're doing their job, so.
All right, so we need to get a motion on this. Are we going to accept these, the recommendations?
I make a motion to approve Chesapeake Waste Industries LLC for a three-year contract in the amount of $903,888.24 for July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2024, with two one-year options for renewal per the prices quoted for subsequent years.
Is there a second? I will make a second. Is there any further discussion?
I'm going to, I'm going to vote against this just because I'm protesting the fact that I think this is, this is what you get when you get the lowest bidder, and I'm not sure what the alternative here is, but I sure would like to see some other RFPs. It's no fault of your own, but the track record here is bad.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed?
No.
All right, 4, 2, 1. Thank you. Glad we got that done. All right, so why don't we move into the public hearing? Budget works, excuse me. Public hearing ordinance 062021. The subject of this hearing is ordinance 062021 for the purpose of adopting a budget for the town of Centerville for fiscal year 2022. I will now ask Ms. Karen Luthman, Finance Officer, and Ms. Crystal Ebaugh, Acting Town Manager, to provide background on ordinance 062021 and provide a presentation on the budget.
So what I handed out tonight was just the summary sheet for the General Fund and Enterprise Fund and the final capital numbers. The only thing that changed from this one to your last one is Crystal and I verified salaries one last time, and the police department was off 1,100 bucks. So that's the only difference you'll see from this one to the previous one.
I do have a recommendation on one change. We had been talking about putting out a letter and an explanation and some graphs and all of that kind of stuff after the budget is over. We don't have that in the budget. And, and that, you know, if we were going to put it in our water bills, the water bills are maxed out and can only, literally only have one page, right? One sheet of paper. And I believe that what we're going to be sending out is probably going to have a few different pages. So do you have an estimate on what, let's say, one mailer would be with labor and?
I have an email to Bruce with the current company that sends our water bills, so he's supposed to get back to me by tomorrow with an amount, and then I could add that into the, into the A-10 budget. I'm thinking probably a few thousand at least.
How's everybody feel about that?
I think it's essential.
Okay.
Especially since after today, we're going to have another hearing on June 3, right?
No. This is the hearing.
Oh, okay.
June 3 is consideration.
Okay.
Yep. All right, so can you do that, put that in there?
Yeah.
And then we can decide if the amount is appropriate or not.
Yep, and I'll, as soon as I get the quote, I'll send it to everybody to see.
Okay. You have anything else on that?
No, unless you guys had any budget questions.
No. Acting Town Manager, you're up.
Thank you. So for those of you that don't know me, I'm Crystal Ebaugh. I'm the Human Resources Manager for the town of Centerville, currently Acting Town Manager Paul Steves Way. But we've put together a brief slideshow, and it is available on the town's website in the agenda packet, so that way you can go back and review as needed, so. So we're going to go on to the first slide, which is going to be the general fund revenues and expenses. So what we're trying to do is break it down, or break the budget down a little bit better to allow for some more transparency and to give you more information as it pertains, you know, to the budget, the general fund and the enterprise fund. So this first slide here is just an overview of the general fund, including capital projects. So as you can see down on the bottom left, the subtotal revenues, and there's the transfer to permanent fund, which includes the railroad and public utility tax. And you can see the $714,300 capital projects on the right where it has the expenses. So you have your revenues on the left, expenses on the right. And as we go on to the next slide, what we're doing is we're putting it into a pie chart, so that way you can see a visual display of what is outlined on page one. So on that previous page, then you have everything kind of displayed in that pie chart here on, on page two. Just to kind of go over, at the very bottom, you have the total miscellaneous revenue. Just to let you know that that would include contributions, excuse me, of Christmas, Christmas funds, cemetery caretaker house, you know, fire insurance revenue. So when we had a fire at the caretaker's house at the cemetery, any insurance reimbursement has been put into the, that total miscellaneous revenue. So as you can see on the pie chart, in the blue, the large blue, that's the property taxes, 53.7% of total budget for, is that correct, Karen?
Yep, for the general fund.
All right, thank you. So when I'm usually handling human resource matters, this isn't really involved, so it's been a good learning experience for the most part. All right, so like I said, this is just kind of a different visual, instead of just seeing a list of expenses and the totals. I'm not really going over every specific item, but it's there for you to view. So on the third page, third slide, excuse me, is the general fund expenses broken down, actually for, and I want to just make sure I'm correct in this, so this is actually for all of administration. So that's including, I believe it is for all town and police, all town employees.
Yeah, that's all the general fund. Public safety, roads, government.
Yep, okay. Because I had a note here for the A-92, but I wanted to make sure I was correct, but.
That's just the gray one.
I'm sorry?
The gray block, that's the one.
There we go, yes. All right. So as far as the salaries, like I said, it's, what it includes is the steps, any promotions, you know, for all town employees and police, the police department. Then we have the insurance for all employees, payroll taxes, pension, economic development, audit and legal feel, legal fees, contract services.
Next slide.
Yeah, next slide.
Oh, I'm like, who has the?
I'm sorry?
I didn't know who had the slide.
Oh, I'm still on the same, oh, I am so sorry. I did not realize that. Did I miss it? Oh, I'm sorry. So as I was saying, I was reading down on the left, left side, just kind of showing the contract services, phone, postage, electric, heat, maintenance, any trainings, dues, advertising, meetings, travel, operating supplies, special events such as the parade, I'm guessing the Christmas parade, Fourth of July, et cetera, and then any bank card fees. So we broke those down to make it, like I said, more visually understandable.
And Crystal, this is just, this is basically, if you go back to the previous slide, right?
Oh, yes, the gray slice.
This is basically to give you a further explanation, instead of just saying, oh, we've got general government is 20%. This shows you that 20% in a full pie chart, right? What, how you break down that 20%.
Sorry, that's what happens when I print both sides. I skipped a, I skipped a slide. Just going back really quick, just so you can see that. So we took the gray pie slice, the general government, and broke that down even further into this next slide as a comparison. And I'm just trying to think if I need to go back. So, yeah, I do want to go back one really quick. So on this, the blue side, or excuse me, the blue slice, pie slice, the light blue one, public safety, 29.4% of the budget, that's, that's only including the police department's salaries. Let's see, totals, so on the, the bottom right.
It's the entire.
Entire budget.
Yeah, so each, each one of these is each department's entire budget out of the general fund.
Oh, okay. Excuse me. This is why Karen's here, to help me out. All right. And that's also, okay, so the compensatory payout, that includes also end of service, correct, Karen?
Correct.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, that's basically, we made a decision to have payout every year, and that's what.
And that's just to be included in the budget, because years passed, anyone that left, it was not budgeted for any additional funds for any of our balances to be paid out per our policies, which the policies are very similar to other agencies, as we do try to make sure that we're mirroring, mirroring other agencies. So we'll go ahead and skip this other slide. That was the one I just went over. So the next slide is going to be the general fund capital projects, not really going down every item in the list, but just to point out a few, B-10 police department vehicles. So the police department has a vehicle replacement policy, so that is to replace, you know, one of the older vehicles with a new one each year. And even though I'm not law enforcement, my husband is, and so I could definitely understand and relate to how often those cars, it's very quick to get those cars used, high mileage and everything, just because that's, that's their office, mobile office, so.
This budget replaces two cars.
Oh, this budget? Okay. Well, was that an additional request, though, for the second vehicle? Because I thought it was just one or a vehicle replacement policy replacing.
Two per year if, we've had some years where we didn't do two because.
Oh, and it just makes it, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Let's see here. So another one is C-11s under, uh, streets, the dump body for large IH dump truck. So having the dump truck is essential, not only for just the work for the public works department, but also for the ability for staff as far as just hiring and retaining. In order for our employees in the public works department to qualify for a CDL license, we have to have a vehicle that they can use. And currently the one that we have is in disarray where it wouldn't even pass inspection. Just the, the qual, the, you know, the condition that it's in. So what we're having to resort to is trying to borrow or rent one every time we need to get someone certified for their CDL. So just so you can see at the very bottom, um, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. And then just to point out that the revolving sidewalk fund, um, that's a revolving, it's a continuing maintenance fee. So if it's not used, my understanding, if it's not used this fiscal year, it just gets brought into the next fiscal year. So then down at the total, uh, general fund capital expense requests, the 714,000, 300 is matching what's on the front page. Municipal property tax rates over time, we wanted to provide, um, residents with a visual. Oh, that might have been, yes. Just a, a visual of different, uh, uh, other municipalities and their tax rates, uh, over time. As you can see, uh, there is the arrow indicating that the, the thick blue line is the Town of Centerville. And back in 2010, we were not the lowest, um, as far as tax rates go, but we've actually shown almost like a decline when every, you know, majority of the other agencies, um, had actually increased with regards to their property taxes.
It's important to note that all these towns have police departments.
And provide services similar to the Town of Centerville.
Yep. So they all provide services very similar. And just also to point out that, um, the county property taxes have gone up. Just to note that. So the next slide is something I'm more familiar with. So the salary study regarding, um, public works and the police department. We wanted to be able to provide you with a visual graph of the comparing agencies and where we used to be versus where we are now. So where we used to be is the red bar. At the top is the entry level, public works employee starting salary. So our previous starting salary, uh, rate was 1438 or 1437, excuse me. And the new rate is now 1538 based on the salary study to certainly try and be competitive with surrounding agencies, other, even other just companies, other, uh, jobs. And just to illustrate onto the right are actual ads, job ads of other businesses that are hiring. And, you know, as you can see, you know, local, the local Dunkin' Donuts starting salary was $15 an hour. And to, and to really try to, how do I explain it? Um, you know, the, the, the type of work that a public works utility worker has to do compared to someone who's working at Dunkin' Donuts is not, it's more labor intensive with the utility worker position. And so it's, it's, it was, it's very difficult to have to try and recruit someone for the same amount. If they're not having to do as much of the labor work. Um, and also you know, utility workers are essential staff, so they're on call. They sometimes have to come in at two, three o'clock in the morning if they, you know, work till nine o'clock. If there was a water leak, um, any kind of an emergency situation, um, when there's snow removal that's required. So that being said, uh, we did want to have our position more competitive to make it more attractive to, uh, candidates. And just the same with, you know, some of these other examples, you know, Amazon warehouse, it's up to 1690 an hour. Hiring, you know, Domino's Pizza in Chestertown, um, they're hiring between 13 and $20 an hour. And, you know, that also includes tips or it doesn't include tips. So, you know, that could be a little bit more for them. So, you know, this is kind of what unfortunately we're experiencing with trying to get fully staffed. Um, so in order to compete or to be competitive and to have retention. So the same with the police department, uh, which is the next graph below. So a new academy graduate, the old salary was second to the, to the last as far as the lowest, you know, second to lowest starting salary. And, uh, after we conducted the salary study, now at least we're in third place. So it, it does allow for interested candidates, um, some, some competitiveness for us, um, that they would actually want to come and work for the town. So. We have actually hired some, uh, temps, uh, from temp agencies. We have contacted them. But unfortunately, you know, the difficulty is our staff members have to shadow them. So that, uh, prevents them from getting their own work done. So we've had some difficulties trying to keep up with the work because they're having to shadow, uh, the temps who have not, who have to be trained, um, in using that equipment. Let's see. The other, the issue that we're experiencing, which hopefully is going to be ending soon is the fact that unemployment is paying more. So it's difficult to get people to want to come to work if they're getting paid more for, um, beyond unemployment. So on to the next slide, and this is just to illustrate. So when I talked about the dump truck a few slides ago, capital improvements continue to be needed. The, the truck in question are the first two pictures on that slide. As you can see, the rust is horrible. And it's not something, like I said, that we can get passed for inspections. So we can't have it being used for the CDL certifications. And just to kind of show, uh, that most side streets look like that picture, uh, the third picture, um, on the top and that alligator pattern. And then we also have the two, um, I'm not sure if they're considered sheds or buildings that are on our farm. Obviously are in disarray and need significant repair. And in, in my opinion, and as well, is that this is a, a safety concern, especially if you are going to try and park a vehicle in there. I certainly do not want one of our staff members to have the roof cave in on them. So it's definitely a safety issue and improvements that, that's what we need is to, to have these repaired. So on to the next slide is our enterprise fund, revenues and expenses. So very similar to how we have it set up in the general fund, uh, slides. And just to bring to your attention, um, under the revenue side is the American Rescue Plan Act totaling over four million, uh, which is part of a stimulus. And Karen can probably elaborate a little bit more as it's a, a newly, uh.
Yeah, the town is getting 4.132 million from the state for the American Rescue Plan Act. We'll get the first half this fiscal year and the second half exactly one year later. And, uh, a lot of these things can be spent for enterprise fund capital and infrastructure. So that's where we're trying to cover a lot of the things we haven't been able to cover in the capital budget for the last few years. And so I double checked him. It is 4.132. So I didn't know if you wanted her to change the minutes or not.
Yeah, we did.
To 312?
She put down 1.3.
It said 1.312.
Yeah. Which is, I think when Steve was talking, giving that presentation, that, the, actually that total number, he was talking about the 1.312 and then the 1.062 numbers.
It's the balance left unspent.
Correct. Which is what I had, I had that, those numbers written in my notes. So I don't, yeah.
All right. So that's really the only item that I really, uh, wanted to point out on this slide. Again, they are available on the website as well. So on to our next slide is the Town of Centerville Enterprise Fund Revenues Versus Expenses Over Time. So the green line is the total non-allocation revenues. The red is the total expenses. So the expenses are more than revenue based on the needs of the previous pages. And the user fee revenue is not keeping up with the expenses. So as you can see, we did have, or we did display on the right column, uh, the fiscal history of total loss. But the allocation review is not included because it should not be used for operations and maintenance. So, um, and then I also wanted to note does not include, uh, labor cost allocation to general fund. So on to the next slide is the enterprise fund capital projects.
Crystal, can we go back to the previous slide?
Absolutely.
I just want to make, you know, a statement for the record. It, it, the FY '22 Karen includes the addition of the, the additional fee increase.
Yep, correct.
So for folks that are in the room and might watch this later, I mean, we are still operating at an enterprise fund deficit, even with the additional increases that are coming in fiscal year '22 to our town water bill. And what that means is that every year we are taking half a million, now 300,000, 77,000 in the out year from property tax revenue to cover enterprise accounts. So we, we still not, we are still not charging enough for what the water and sewer system costs to operate. And so we're doing this kind of budgetary magic where we take property tax revenues and spend it on these enterprises, these wastewater and, and drinking water accounts, which we're, we should not be doing. The enterprise revenues should cover the expenses. We're, we're narrowing the gap. But that, I mean, there it is. We are still, still not there.
So back to the, um, moving forward to the enterprise fund capital projects. Just to point out, the fourth gateway antenna is basically the cost to help, uh, employees because we need, uh, it's, it costs labor to have an employee currently to manually read meters instead of doing it electronically. So that's taking, uh, an employee away from their daily activities and, and maintenance to go and just read meters when we have, you know, there is capabilities of trying to do it electronically, which would save a lot of time. It would allow our employees to complete the, the, the other tasks that are just as important. You know, maybe respond to any, you know, calls from our residents so that they can report in a timely fashion. And I just wanted to, you know, point out, um, that, you know, our public works is short-staffed. And that is one of the hopes with this salary study, that we will attract, uh, employees to come and work for the town because we have several vacancies open. Um, so hopefully that will help. And then having, uh, gateway antenna for the water, wastewater department, be able to read those meters because I can tell you, just talking with, uh, Linda from our finance, that it would take one of those employees, just one, at, at least what, two, two, three days to read the meters and that's it. So that's three days that there is other tasks not being completed.
If you're following along with this at home or in the room, you might see things that are in categories more than once, like the mini excavator is, that's because the cost of that is spread across those budget areas. It's not a redundancy. The, like the excavator is $93,000 spread for different ways.
Thank you. And then under C-25 farm irrigation buildings. So this tractor expense, uh, I wanted to point out. We wanted to save cost before when we purchased this tractor and realized that it's not doing the work that we need it to do. It, it's too small. So in an effort of trying to save money, we're, we're not, so, well, we are, but it's, we're, we're trying to, I mean, we were trying to save the money, but, but $20,000 is covered by a federal stimulus. So of this 100,000, or excuse me, of this, um, total 2.8 million, total enterprise fund capital expense requests, you said all, oh, excuse me, all but 20,000 is covered by the federal stimulus. So, um, so that's just to kind of point that out. Uh, let's see here. Oh, the American Rescue Plan Act, federal stimulus that we discussed on one of the previous slides. The next slide is the total property tax burden, um, Queen Anne's County and Town of Centerville. I just want to point out that the yellow line at the top is the total, the blue is the county and the red is the town. As you can see in the yellow line for the total, uh, that was the original, the 1.2271 before county commissioners put in tax differential. Um, and here we, and that was in 2000, our fiscal year 2014. And here we are in fiscal year 2022 and we're only at 1.2521. So there's not much, it's not much different from the original back in FY '14. So again, this slide is actually covering the history of fiscal year 2014 through fiscal year 2022. Total tax burden for fiscal year 14. Like I pointed out, is the 1.2271 per $100 assessed value. If your property was worth, so for example, if your property was worth $300,000 in fiscal year 14, your total tax would be $3,681. And your total tax for fiscal year '22 for a 300, uh, $300,000 assessed property value is $3,756. So that's a net increase of $75. So what we're trying to do is just put it into a perspective by having these graphs. And you see an increase and nobody wants an increase, but we're trying to explain why we need it. And what the history is, is showing. So on to the, this is the last slide is the tax burden example, including increased assessed value between fiscal year 14 and FY '22. Assessments have gone up on an average 16% during that time period. I gave you the example on the previous slide as far as a $300,000 assessed value, total tax for FY, uh, 14 is $3,681. For the other example of fiscal year '22, if it's at 348,000 assessed value, which is the 16% increase, then your total tax is $4,357, which is, gives you a total increase of $676. So based on the tax differential implemented in FY '14, the average property has saved $2,109 in taxes. So if you subtract this year's proposed increase, the average property tax savings over time has been $1,433. When you subtract the. when you subtract the 2,109 from the, or $676. So hopefully I've explained it as clear as mud. But, I mean, what we're ultimately, in all seriousness, what we're trying to do is, is just provide a different way of seeing the budget. And hopefully it allows a little bit more light to some concerns and questions. So that's my presentation. Does council have any questions?
No, hearing none, I'll move on. I will now call upon Carolyn Brinkley, Town Clerk, to present evidence of the published notice of this hearing. Thank you, by the way, Crystal Lee, great job.
Certificate of Publication State of Maryland County of Queen Anne's. This is to certify that the annex legal advertisement has been published in the April 30th, 2021 Bay Record, or Bay Times Record Observer.
We will first hear from all those in favor of proposed ordinance O6 2021, and then hear from those opposed. Please keep all comments to three minutes. You are welcome to provide written testimony to the town council as well. Carolyn, would you read the, would you read the notice, please?
Welcome to this meeting of the Centerville Town Council. This is a public meeting, and we welcome your participation. By attending, you acknowledge that this session is recorded and aired live on QACTV7. During the meeting, we ask that you turn your cell phones off and hold personal conversations outside the meeting room. The scheduled agenda is available on the information table just outside. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per person. The town council respects and appreciates your desire and right to convey your message freely. And in keeping with the dignity of proceedings, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner. Comments longer than three minutes should be submitted in writing. If questions are a part of your comments, we'll refer those to the appropriate individual. Thank you.
So just, just for the public's knowledge here, right, we're having a budget, this is a hearing on the budget ordinance. We will then do a hearing on the constant yield, and then we will have public comment, right? So there's going to be three opportunities if someone wants to be for or against something. So if you want to speak to this one, you're welcome to. If you want to speak to the next one, you're welcome to. And then if you want to make comments during general public comments, we'll move on to that one as well. So we will first now hear from all those in favor of proposed ordinance O6 2021. Please come forward. Let the record show there were none. And we will hear from all those opposing proposed ordinance O6 2021. So we have a couple of people here that are signed up. I'm assuming that that's for this. And I've got several emails that I will read as well. And we'll do the people who are live first. Royce Herman is, are you going to speak to this one? For this, this public hearing? Come on up. Yep.
I'm a little better prepared than I was last, last time.
Just please state your name and your address, and you've got three minutes.
Okay, my name's Royce Herman. I live at 213 Hope Road, up in Centerville Heights. Centerville, like the rest of the state, and in fact, for that matter, the whole country, is a, is slowly recovering from this pandemic, which has pretty much devastated our economy. And I don't think anybody will disagree with that one. But the economy is still very fragile. There are two things to consider when you're talking about revenue. First one is short run, and the second one is long run revenue. Now, anytime you increase taxes, you're going to get a bump on the short, in the short run. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna happen. However, it's not sustainable. In the long run, that's where you're going to see the differences. And there's examples through the state, federal, and so forth, where these tax increases have forced companies out of the country, out of the state, and so forth. I don't have time in three minutes to go through all that. If you raise taxes, you'll most probably see a rise in short run, which is what you're probably looking for here. In the long run, however, long run revenue will go down. And there's a couple of really good reasons for that. And when they, when you take money out of the system, what you're doing is you're, you're creating a reduction in disposable income in your population. If you members of Centerville government are serious about raising revenue, and I'm sure all of you are, you, and to maintain stability at the same time, you should be looking at increasing your business base. You've got a very large area, I don't know, I guess it's the south end of town here behind Dunkin' Donuts. It's growing nothing but weeds at the moment. And I, when I was on the Economic Development Commission for the county, we looked at that, and there were some inquiries from different companies, and nothing really has been done. And the business park should be developed, which is what it originally was designed to be, as a, not just a revenue source, but a, a growth opportunity for the town. Centerville has a substantial population of retirees and people living on fixed incomes. To tax away a portion of disposable income, be it large or small, is counterproductive. Because that's that much money, less money, that these people are spending here in town, not only in town, but elsewhere as well. And in order to give you a, a growth opportunity, you've got to consider some changes to the way you're approaching your business base. I know that the, we looked at that in the, in the county level, and there were certain, certain, okay, three minutes was not enough time?
You can submit them in writing if you'd like as well.
I'm sorry?
You can, you can provide them in writing as well, and we'll all get them as well.
Well, okay. If anybody wants to hear the economic reasons why these things are true, give me a call. I'd be more than happy to sit down, have a cup of coffee, and explain it to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Steve Quigley. I assume you want to talk about the ordinance?
Yep.
Okay.
Does this count against my three minutes? Let's sit down.
I wait until you say your name.
My name is Steve Quigley. I live at 509 Symphony Way, right here in Centerville. When we came to this town, 15, 16 years ago, we loved it because it is a small town, super friendly people, and an affordable cost of living. Well, now we're looking at, two out of three ain't bad. So when I look at this chart, and thank you for making it, because it made it super clear, the municipal property tax rates over time dropping in Centerville, it looks like we're in the mode of trying to correct that in a relatively short period of time, as opposed to perhaps some mistakes that were made earlier in the 2010, 2016 timeframe. I'm not sure, for the reasons that were just mentioned, that may be the best of all moves. I think the long-term retribution for this will be pretty sincere. One of the questions I had that came up was had to do with the increase in the trash collection. I'm just wondering how much of that 200,000 increase is due to the fact that the supplier didn't tell us that you couldn't put glass in there, and all of his lots were rejected, where he was losing money there for. I wonder how much of that 200,000 could be explained by the fact that he just did not tell you guys what was going on. Couple other little things that might want to consider. Is the rainy day fund, how, how long are we actually taking to replenish that? I think we'd all like to replenish that, but maybe not by Thursday. If we put that out in function of perhaps a little bit longer in time, may offer some relief. If I look at the, the explanation, again, Marty, you have a terrific job on the, on the slides that you did. I'm looking at our increase, and it came out to be very close to that number that you had. So it raised the question of the assessment. You said at the 200, and if I get this slide correctly, in the 2020, the 2014 assessment, and then there was an assessment in 2022. Is that something that the people who live here are aware of? Because then that number agrees with what we observed. And then I have to ask the question, were all the houses that were built in 1827, were all those reassessed in 2022? It's question, little niggling questions like that that kind of bother me. So I appreciate your time, but that's pretty much what I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's everybody that I have signed up. Well, if there's anyone else that wants to speak against the ordinance O6 2021, you're welcome to come on up, say your name, your address, and you've got three minutes. Otherwise, I'm going to read the emails that we received. Okay? I will close that portion to the live guests. And now I will do my best to read the emails that we have. This is from Penny Linz on Watson Road. Members of the Centerville Town Council, I respectfully request you reconsider the property, the proposed property tax increase. Due to COVID, these are trying financial times for many of Centerville residents. A 25% increase in the property tax could force some residents to pull up stakes and move elsewhere. Also, last year, the citizens of Centerville received a 25% increase in their water and sewer bills. That, along with a 25% property tax increase, will put a real financial crimp in my pocketbook, and I feel certain other residents are like-minded. Thank you for reconsidering this proposed tax increase. Next, we have an email from Laurel Lynn Anderson Petrie at 146 Sonata Way. I am adamantly, I adamantly oppose any increase in property taxes at this time. We have just been through one of the most difficult periods in the last century, and many people are still feeling the economic effects of this pandemic. Residents of Centerville are already facing a huge increase in their water bills, and under these circumstances, it is unconscionable that the town council would even consider raising property taxes. The next one is from Justin Asher, 1324 Brook Run Lane. I'm against the raising of taxes. The town has done enough with raising the water bill to point, to the, to the point it makes me and other citizens terrified to receive our bills. The raising of the, of more living expenses to remain living in the town limits is creating yet another financial burden that we as citizens should not have to shoulder. This is not right, and with everything else going on financially with the town citizens, this is not an inconsiderate but damaging to the citizens at this juncture in time. Next, we have Elizabeth Lapree, 205 Creamery Lane. I do not want, nor can I afford the increase in property taxes. My income is at proffered level. How not to pay for, how to pay for not raising the taxes is proper policing of Centerville and ticketing violators of national parking laws, such as parking 20 feet from stop signs and not parking under the stop signs which block the view from the right. Parking along yellow painted curbing and hanging off the end of the street which blocks traffic views. Next, we have Daryl Barricklow, 155 Eden Dairy Avenue. I am ready to voice my opposition to the proposed tax, proposed increase in property taxes. A relatively short time ago, the town council voted to increase water and sewer fees. The back-to-back 25% increase yields an overall increase of over 56% from where we were in 2019. Now amidst the worst global pandemic seen in over a century, this council is considering yet another staggering increase with a 32% jump in property tax. I see a 2022 budget bloated and inflated with many nonessential expenses, $60,000 to conduct a study for a proposed government building, and the transfer of nearly a half a million dollars to the permanent fund are just two examples of this unreasonable spending. Where does this downward spiral in spend end? The actions of this town council regarding the proposed property tax increase will have a direct and lasting negative effect on the future of business and residential growth. As you drive through town today, nearly every other commercial storefront is shuttered or vacant, and producing zero capital and zero growth. Increasing the cost of owning or operating a business will only make that condition worse. Each of you were voted onto the council to represent the citizens of the town. I challenge each of you to vote with not only a moral and ethical compass, but with a fiscal conscience as well. I'm going to ask one more time if there's anybody that is opposing proposed ordinance O6 2021. Hearing none, the Centerville Town Council will consider all comments presented this evening before making a final decision regarding proposed ordinance O6 2021. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this hearing?
No, moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And now declare this hearing adjourned. All right, we've got the next item, which is another hearing. I will now convene this hearing concerning the constant yield tax rate for the Town of Centerville for fiscal year 2022. Karen, please provide comments regarding the constant yield tax rate. Ms. Lufman?
This hearing is just because we're raising the property tax rates above the constant yield. We'll be going to 53 and a half cents for property tax and $13 per hundred of assessed value for PUD.
Okay. And we'll now call upon Carolyn Brinkley, Town Clerk, to present evidence of the published notice of this hearing.
Certificate of Publication State of Maryland County of Queen Anne's. This is to certify that the annex legal advertisement has been published in the May 7th, 2021 Record Observer, real property tax increase.
We'll first hear from all those in favor of the proposed constant yield tax rate, and then hear from those opposed. Please keep all comments to three minutes. You're welcome to provide written testimony to the town council as well. I'm going to skip the public guidelines. I think we all know what they are. We will now hear from all those in favor of the proposed constant yield tax rate. Please come forward. Hearing none, we will move on. We will now hear from all those opposing the proposed constant yield tax rate. Anybody is welcome to come on up and give more comments. Let the record show there were none. The Centerville Town Council will consider all comments presented this evening before making a final decision. The public comment, the public hearing on the budget for fiscal year 2022 will be held following this hearing? Wait a second. Oh, no, we did that one first. Sorry. Do I hear a motion to adjourn this hearing?
No, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
And now declare this hearing adjourned. Okay. Now we're moving into regular, to back to the regular meeting. We're going to go into Citizens Forum. So this is an opportunity again for any citizens to basically talk about any municipal issue they would like to have their three minutes on. And I will again open up the floor. If there's any citizens that would like to comment, please come forward. You're welcome to come on up.
I'm not sure if this has anything to do with what I'm asking.
Well, so here's what you got to do, because we can't, this is, this is public, this is on TV. We need to get you on video and so that the audience can hear. So please just come up and state your name and where you live, and you're welcome to make any comments that you want. Usually during this portion of the public comments, we're able to answer questions. If they're complicated questions, we may not be able to do that.
Okay, this is in reference to-
Can you state your name, please?
Linda Morrison. I live at 4, 4 South Liberty Street, Center Room Allen.
Thank you.
This is in reference to Whedon Street, about the water and sewer, where the, the backup on Whedon Street, there was a problem where it's never been fixed. And it's part of the, looking at, Steve just told me that it's one of the things for the budget in the future to be fixed. It's very expensive to fix that. And a lot of the residents, it was supposed to be fixed a while ago before those houses were ever built. When the houses were set, the lots were, were sold to frills, and they were sold to frills, and they, they were supposed to be able to figure out how to have the waste set up to Liberty Street, and evidently it failed. And then there's another way that they got it to go through. And there's exactly 15 waste going through that one trap, which goes through my yard.
Okay. So I will tell you that this is in the budget this year. There's three components to it. There's the water, there's the wastewater, and then there's the road, right? So all three of those things are going to be fixed. Fortunately, when we redid Liberty Street a few years ago, we actually put in the proper, whatever that's called, connection, deep enough down there, right? So that, with the anticipation that at some point Whedon Street would get done. So when we do do that in our next fiscal budget, again, the wastewater, the water and the road, that will tie into there, and it will no longer go on that private property.
Well, will you be able to put the component in at the end of the street that will be strong enough to push it all up to Liberty? That was the issue.
I'm going to have to defer to KIP, but I believe that we put it in there, we will put it in there deep enough so that it will be a gravity-fed system. So yes.
And the part that is now the trap will be closed off, as Steve said, would be cemented, because it's not just mine, it's also my sister's.
That's correct.
Okay, because that was shut down at one point. It was never supposed to be opened back up again. And when I found out, I was furious. Steve told me. And Ronnie Jewell, Donnie Jewell, and Mr. Vanderwind were all supposed to be put into the street. And when Mr. Rada went to put my water and sewer in, there was nobody on that pipe, and he told me so. So I knew it was done without my permission, or me even knowing about it. And it was never supposed to have been done.
How long ago was that?
My house was built in 78, and it was disconnected probably the year prior, because when they saw, they thought it, Mr. Eddie Walls, who worked for my dad, my father was mayor of Centerville for 14 years, no price. So when he saw that, he said, you better get down there, he said, because- So when he saw that, he said, "You better get down there," he said, "because we thought it was a pool, my sister's pool." He said, "There's pipes underneath that where she's putting that house." And they had Mr. Arthur, I can't think of Arthur's last name right now, but he died. He came down and showed me where they, I knew where they were going across there, but it was all supposed to be shut down, of that part of it. The main pipe that goes underneath the hill between the cemetery and my property, Mr. Rada told me, it's 100 feet down. He said that'll never, he said it'd be 100 years before that ever has anything happen to it. He said, "You'll be dead and gone by then. It'll be somebody else's problem."
The good news is that we're going to fix it this year. And so this is one of the things that this council has had to deal with, that this has been a problem that was shortcut 45 years ago, and now we're having to fix that.
I appreciate it very much.
You're welcome. So these kind of issues are all over town, and we got to work on getting them done. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. This is a list of names that I did have put down. I didn't get them all, but I'm sure everybody on that street will be appreciative that they don't have to have backups where that little truck comes in to suck it all out and have the road turn around. I'm sure that they'll appreciate, I know I will.
Ma'am?
Thank you.
Kip, when is that project to start, Whedon Street?
In this proposed budget, so after July 1st.
After July 1st.
About to begin. All right, that's it for Citizen Forum. Unless there's anybody else that wants to make comments? All right, hearing none, we're going to move into old business. So next topic we have is quarterly landfill fees. Karen, come on back up again.
So as Kip was working on the RFP this year, we were also going through to make sure that the revenue we took in covered the cost of the trash, and unfortunately, it did not. When the resolution was originally set up for the landfill fees, it did an increase of 3% every three years. The problem with that is the trash companies have an increase every year, so eventually it was going to catch up, which is now an FY22, to where we're paying more for the services than the residents are, you know, we're paying more than what we're taking in. So my recommendation this year is, this was the one of the years to go up 3%. It was going to $47.74, and in order to cover the cost, it needs to go up to $48.50 per quarter, which is an increase of 76 cents per quarter.
Per quarter.
Per quarter, yeah.
Three months.
So three bucks a year. And then I would also recommend a 3% increase per year instead of every third year, based on the way the contracts are given to us.
I'd like to make a motion, or is there any discussion? Excuse me.
Well, let's make a motion in a second, then we can discuss it unless you have one.
I was going to make a motion, too. Go ahead.
All right. I move to increase the landfill fee to $48.50 per EDU per quarter for fiscal year 22, and have an annual increase of 3% per year thereafter.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion in a second to accept the quarterly landfill fees. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, new business. Resolution 04-2021, Law Enforcement Officer's Pension System. Chief, you want to come up and do this, or is this something we could just, I mean, we discussed this last time we made a motion?
Yeah, well, I think we have a catch-up resolution here, right, to cover what we did last time formally?
The catch-up resolution is after the initial resolution.
So in order to really formalize going into this, one of the things that LEOPS, I think, requires is that the town council adopt a resolution, right? That goes in the formula into it?
Correct. A resolution to transfer the existing state retirement to the LEOPS retirement plan, and then to continue with the LEOPS. So a resolution for each to continue with LEOPS once it's adopted.
Chief, could you please, for the citizens, what is LEOPS?
So LEOPS is the Law Enforcement Officer's Pension System. It's a retirement system that's specific to law enforcement officers, which is separate from most traditional state, 30-year state retirement plans. LEOPS is the modern version of a law enforcement's retirement system, and it's used by probably now close to 90% of law enforcement agencies in the state of Maryland. So we're very pleased that the council supported LEOPS for the members of the Centerville Police Department.
Excellent. Do we have a motion to approve? Resolution 04-2021?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 04-2021. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, next, we've got 05-2021, and this is basically the pickup resolution. Yes, the pickup resolution. Okay. Is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 05-2021, which is the Law Enforcement Officer's Pension System pickup. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Correspondents, we did receive a letter asking for a proclamation proclaiming Friday, June 4, 2021, as Gun Violence Awareness Day. This year, June 4 marks the 7th Annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day, followed by Where Orange Weekend. So everybody had a chance to read this. We've got a proclamation that actually has been prepared if anybody wants to make a motion to sign that. I will actually make a motion to proclaim June 4, National Gun Violence Awareness Day.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to proclaim June 4, National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay. There was also a letter from a Boy Scout who was interested in a project that he's working on in Easton and is asking for donations. I think it'd be appropriate, if anybody's interested in making donations, you're welcome to do that. Report of Boards and Commissions, Centerville Park Advisory Board.
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Queen Anne's County Council of Governments. I know there was a meeting.
Finally, everyone pretty much talked about everybody working on their budgets, and they elected the new officers, and they all stayed the same. Well, new vice president, I forgot his name from Sudleville.
All right.
Yes, new vice-
Any discussion on the differential or no?
Huh?
No discussion on the differential? All right. Anything else?
There was no county commissioner there.
Okay. That was a perfect opportunity, then. Maryland Municipal League.
Nothing to report.
All right. I don't have anything from the Economic Development An-hoc Committee. Centerville Planning Commission, the Planning Commission did meet last night and had a discussion regarding the text amendment regarding the ag district. Sharon is going to be putting together some comments based on that last night, and the Planning Commission will be forwarding on a letter as well. I don't have anything else on that. Report of the department heads, Town Manager.
Just briefly update council that roadwork will begin Saturday morning, 7:00 AM, to install and connect the lateral to Mr. Goodheart's property, and Carol has contacted the appropriate businesses that will be affected. So if anyone's going to be blocked off, I mean, they're basically going to block off, excuse me, Banjo Lane right at Water Street, and probably go as far back up to like Calgary's office. So some of those businesses won't have parking available, so Carol has contacted them to make other arrangements. And then Carolyn has sent an email blast out this afternoon notifying all of our enrolled or subscribed recipients that this is going to be happening on Saturday. They don't anticipate it taking more than Saturday, so we should be done right after that, but it's a long-waited process to get done, so we're happy to at least have a satisfied resident once he gets the lateral connected.
This is one of those things as well. It's another one of those problems that was never fixed way back when, and now-
16 years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Running wood in-
I just think it's incredible that they couldn't find.
I'd like to congratulate the town council and Kip Matthews and all the efforts that we have made to take care of Mr. Goodheart and his needs of having wastewater.
Great. Anything else?
Yeah, just real quickly, we got an email from Mr. Goodheart saying that Kip had really handled himself with aplomb and professionalism, and I just want to tip my hat along with Mr. Goodheart and say thank you for that. I know this is probably a stressful situation for him, and I appreciate it that you're out there, working with him, and trying to make these things right for people. So thank you very much, Kip.
All right. Anything else, Crystal?
Not for the Town Manager report, no.
Okay. Chief of Police.
In your package, you'll find the April overview from the Centerville Police Department, which includes Page 1, the results from April's ASE Photo Enforcement Program, the monthly report. On the back of that, total number of fines collected, number of fines collected per location. Notice there's two cameras. We've been having some connectivity issues with the third camera that's in the town out by the Accra Shopping Center. You'll find Exhibit A, which is a calls-for-service totals by month, which should give you kind of an average on where we are per month throughout 2021. You'll also find on Exhibit B, your calls-for-service three-year comparison, which just kind of gives you a breakdown per percentage on what's most important to me are Part 1, our more serious crimes, which I constantly monitor, and I'm pleased to report that those are down as compared to previous years. And then Exhibit C is an enforcement analysis for April of 2021. Exhibit D is traffic stops for April 2021. Exhibits E and F also are day of the week and time of the day when our officers are out there being most productive. And I'll just add that some of my colleagues and I were able to do a good house cleaning on the second floor of the police department, which is unoccupied by us. All of our work, you look at that building, it's a two-story building, but the second floor is usually home to dust boxes, and I think we have a sparrow's nest up there right now that has babies. We were able to get a dump body truck and fill it to the top this week, so it's nice and spacious. Unfortunately, we still have to climb a set of attic stairs to occupy that second floor. But what I did discover when I was up there cleaning this week is that we do have a box, a case of gun locks, so if there are any residents of Centerville that are looking to ways to secure firearms at home, we'd be happy to provide them with a gun lock for free. So anybody that would like to stop down to the police department and meet with me, I'd be happy to speak with them and provide them with a gun lock, gun safety lock.
Do they keep the key, or you get the key?
They can have the key. I have enough keys, sir. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Yeah, we talked a little bit about this, but I'm curious your take on electrified, you know, EV police vehicles and the impact of maintenance costs over time. Can we, do you think if we were to invest, I saw, I'm kind of excited about this new F-150, which is what I drive, can we get maintenance costs down over time?
Absolutely. In fact, I spoke with two dealerships, and I'm waiting on a third out of Delaware, and I have specifically requested pricing for EV vehicles. Even a hybrid vehicle would be an upgrade compared to what we have now. We have moved our services, our routine services every 3,000 miles and tires and things like that, actual from the dealership to a local shop here in Centerville, which is actually about $20 cheaper a service than what we were doing before. We were driving our cars to Easton, taking two officers out of service for hours at a time. We now do it locally, where we can run an officer up and use, get him back on the streets in a spare vehicle. So certainly, that is going to drop our numbers as it relates to the wear and tear from a strict gas-engine car, not to mention fuel prices. So that is of particular interest to me as we pursue buying options to replace these two new vehicles that we're hoping to get in our fleet this year.
Can we get some consensus to prioritize electric vehicles here? I mean, I think that's a great idea.
Chief, how's the Liberty, South Liberty Street police car parked, working?
It's working pretty well. We find new souvenirs on it every day in support of our police officers here, who I am incredibly proud of. So in my humble opinion, I think it's been well-received. I've had a few citizens that have actually texted me and said that they find themselves doing more brake checks coming down that hill now. And I said, you know, "Don't be surprised if we don't give Officer Fred a day off and maybe put a real police officer in there." So there's things that have been-
Maybe I shouldn't have asked.
But no, and Ms. Draper actually provided the sign for us, and that's kind of, you know, we always get all these great baskets and show of support and baked goods and lunches and things during National Police Week or Police Appreciation Week. And I think we could not be as successful as we are without the support of the residents of this town, so that's why we wanted to put something on that card, just let everyone know how incredibly grateful we are to police in this town.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very much.
All right, next, we've got Director of Public Works, Kip, and you've got a memo here for us as well.
Very sorry for the short timeframe to bring this before you. We've spoke about this in the past. Water Reuse Farm has a tree-lined buffer at the road front side of it. Some of the trees have died, fell over and stuff. We need to replace them. In a wastewater treatment inspection, this came up in the report, and they're requesting us to go ahead and get this taken care of. Just so the public knows and understands, trees for replacement in this area had been asked for since 2017 in the capital budget. Now we're at the point, we don't have a choice. We've actually reduced our spray area to stay in compliance. We need to get that spray area back to be able to irrigate our wastewater, treated wastewater flowing out on the fields and stuff. Part of the situation is the trees are required to be 8 to 10 feet tall. This wasn't a written policy anywhere. That came from our inspector telling us that they need to be the same height as what the spray nozzles are. The problem is white pine trees are not usually kept in nurseries for that long to be that tall. The other thing is there's a shortage of them to begin with. They're a cheaper tree, and I just found out a lot of places are using them as a buffer for solar panels and solar energy fields and stuff. So with that being said, that's how we got so short on time with this. We were only able to get two bids back, one for Unity Landscape for the $28,834.60. That includes planting and staking. The second bid, we were able to get from a local broker, from Horton, Inc., one of the members of the company lives right here in town. They're, with them being a broker, they don't plant, so all they can do is get us the trees and have them delivered here. It doesn't include the delivery cost, but the 50 trees that we're needing are $12,000. Very late this afternoon, as a matter of fact, just a little bit before, I was able to come up for the meeting tonight, a gentleman finally called, got ahold of me, said he could plant the trees. If we go with Horton, Inc., he's sending me a quote for it to be able to plant the trees. We're so short-staffed, we don't have the time to get this in in a short period of time. So what I'm asking for is approval of- a short period of time. So, what I'm asking for is approval to spend up to $29,000 for these 50 trees to get them in. And that's if, if we're not gonna be out of the planting season, because we're right up against the end of it right now.
Okay. Is, are, are we talking about, so I drove by there, we're talking about taking out trees we've planted to put these in?
We have, yes, we have 25 trees that we put in that are three to four feet.
So, we're gonna have, we have, we paid for those trees, we're gonna have to take them out.
We're allowed to take those and use them as fillers in places like, there's two rows of trees there, where there's a single tree in the back row that has died, fallen over, whatever reason, had to be removed. We can put those smaller trees in spaces like that. So, we won't, it's, those trees won't be wasted by any means.
But we, I mean, we're, we're being punished now for not meeting a standard nobody knew about?
Exactly.
And, and...
Exactly.
Unwritten standard.
Yep.
Right.
Have you cleared it? I'm sorry.
Is there, is there a step we can take as a town council to say, maybe write a letter to the secretary, Mr. Grumbles, and say, you know, this, this ad hoc regulation is...
Making it up to you.
The, the council can do as you wish with that kind of stuff. I will tell you that I won't be part of it for the simple fact that I've worked with MDE inspectors for my whole career, which is over 35 years this year. So, I'm, I'm not one to push back against an inspector. If he tells me it needs to be that way, I understand your side as far as the, the cost and everything. But if, if this, this inspector tells me they need to be there, and they need to be that high, even though it's not in writing somewheres, I don't know that we're gonna get anywhere as going up the chain with it.
Had we put them in in 17, when we should have, they'd probably be eight foot tall by now.
Yeah. Yes.
Probably taller.
If we, if we had taken, taken steps back then and done the shorter trees, we could have filled the smaller spots like that.
All right. We've got a, we've got a, a request here. Do we have a motion to approve this? I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of 50 eight-foot to 10-foot tall white pine trees for replacement at the Water Reuse Farm buffer, not to exceed $29,000 from the Enterprise Fund Waste Water, Enterprise Fund slash Waste Water. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Okay. The ayes have it. We need you back up here for, okay. Anything else, Kip?
I, I just wanna touch on a couple of short things right here. Finn Rick, one of the local residents, and he's also a scout. He was going for his Eagle Scout badge, and he has, him and his fellow scouts have erected two benches, one at the Wharf Park, right next to the, the new playground equipment, another one at the Maelstrom Park next to the playground equipment there. A big thumbs up, and thank you very much to them for doing this work. And it turned out very nice. Looks good.
That's great.
So, yep. Nope, I'll leave it at that tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Human Resources Manager?
Um, just a quick update. Open enrollment will be starting for employees on Monday. Packets are being worked on, and will go out tonight. But another note, just, we're trying to get interviews. We have two scheduled for tomorrow for the utility worker positions, and left messages. So, hopefully, we'll have additional interviews scheduled next week for the water, wastewater operator positions.
Great. One comment I have on, on Human Resources is that we do have a pending job description for the Town Manager, and everyone should have that on their inbox. I'd like, if there are gonna be any changes or comments by close of business tomorrow, so we can get it start to be advertised early next week. Thank you for your job as, as a, wearing two hats over the past several weeks. So, appreciate it.
No problem.
Town Clerk?
Um, real quick, we usually do a modified schedule over the summer where it's one meeting, sometimes June, most of the time June, July, and August. So, at this time, we can talk about a day in those months that you want to hold it. It doesn't necess, it hasn't always had to be on the first or the third. Thursday, it can be an off Thursday if that works for other schedules, vacations, that sort of thing.
So, so the 3rd of June is our first, is our next meeting, right? We're gonna pass the budget. Then I think we should, you know, not do our, our meeting on the 3rd, 3rd Thursday, which is the 17th. But then we're gonna go for a while, and the, the next scheduled meeting would be on the 1st of July, and that's a big vacation week. You know, a lot of people are gonna be out of town. I would actually almost recommend that we move it to the 8th, Thursday, the 8th, if everybody could do that.
I'm good.
And then find, and then the next one, do that on the 12th of August.
Can I actually make one suggestion?
Of course.
Could we actually do the July on the, and if it's too far out, that's fine, on the 15th, only because on the 2nd of July, I'm getting packets out, and that's the day before the fireworks event.
All right. So, that's gonna be too much for you to do to get on the 8th. I'm okay with leaving it on the 15th, just so that everybody knows, in case there's an issue we gotta deal with. We'll have to have a, you know, we'll have to just...
And if you want it on the 8th, that's fine. We'll deal with it.
I'm gonna have to miss the 15th. I'm on vacation.
Well, the 8th is fine, then. 8th is fine.
Can everybody make the 8th?
Yeah.
Make it a light packet. We can let the packet slide maybe to Monday. Although, Monday's the 5th, so that's a, that's the actual holiday.
That's the actual, I'll give it to you when you all come to the fireworks.
All right. So, it's gonna be the 8th, then? Can you send out a calendar invite for that? And then in August, uh...
I actually don't.
How does the...
The 5th is the, the 5th.
I'm sorry.
5th.
August 5th?
That's the first Thursday.
Or do you wanna do, move it to the, to the 12th?
To the 12th. I'm on vacation.
How about the 19th?
19th.
If the 19th works for everybody, that would be our regular council meeting? All right, let's do that. And then that'll be it for the summer. So, then we'll cancel August 5th, cancel July 1st and July 15th, and then we'll do it on the 8th, and then we'll cancel July, June 17th.
Yep.
We'll get with that. And Carolyn, you'll send out an invite. Anything else for Town Clerk?
That's it.
All right. Citizens Forum, we've got another opportunity. If anybody wants to come up, please come forward, state your name, and you've got three more minutes. All right, I think we're good. Next, we've got Council Roundtable. Anna Nia?
Nothing to report.
All right. Keel?
I wanna thank Kip again for the cemetery. I got beat up last week on the cemetery late. I probably got five or six phone calls about cemetery, about the weeds not being trimmed around the headstone, rode through there tonight, and did a good job. Yep.
That's great. All right. Hardy?
Yes, I'd like to report that the chairman of the Cemetery Committee, Ms. Palmetary, attended my massive garage sale, and she profusely thanked me and my fellow town council members for recognizing the need for the cemetery. And she was just very pleased with us. And I think it's very important because of the historical nature, and the importance of the cemetery to the town of Centerville. And it attracts people when you don't think it does, but people in genealogy and history come here to Centerville for such a thing. So...
Yep. All right. Thank you. Klein?
I'm gonna yield my time back.
All right. I got two things.
Didn't forget you tonight.
I did, I'm, I'm, I got this. I got, I am like focused, laser-focused on it now.
Two meetings in a row is a habit.
Uh, two things. Number one, this Sunday, 2:00 PM, the Queen Anne's County High School is having an unofficial senior parade, starting from the high school parking lot, and then I think it ends up in Northbrook. I don't know the exact route, but it's gonna go similar to the, to the parade. Is, is, uh, Goodwill's gonna, are they gonna lead it? It was great last year. I mean, it was a change because the kids couldn't have a, a, a proper graduation, but it was a great thing. They're gonna do it again this year. So, I would encourage everybody to go. And then, you know, we've got a pretty heavy budget that we're working on, and there's a lot of people that aren't happy. And I will put it out there again that I am happy to meet with anybody regarding any issue, if they want to have any complaints, they want to have any concerns, they want to have, anything they want to talk about, I'll buy the coffee, and I'm, I'm happy to meet with you. Give me a call. My phone number is 443-262-5729, and I'm sure that my fellow council members sure feel the same as well. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.